All right.
Hey, Bill, you ready?
Ready.
Yeah.
Go for it. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November seventeenth meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Due to COVID regulations, we are again having these meetings virtually. We hope to get back to town hall and in-person meetings as soon as possible, but until the laws are changed, we're going to continue under this format. Under this format, it's many of you have been with us before. We will hear the public hearings and the applications. Applicants and their consultants will have an opportunity to present their project and some of the details, after which the planning board members will ask questions that we have along with staff. And once we have asked our questions, we will open up to public comment. There is a feature on the bottom of your screen for raising hand to say that you are interested in speaking. If you cannot find that, or if you have problems, usually Ramsey and Jeff are able to see you frantically waving or some kind of maneuver to let them know you would like to speak. We do want to hear everybody that does want to participate in the.
Well, he just got muted.
There you go.
You did it again? Okay.
Oh, you could. Now I can hear you.
I didn't do it. All right, let's start the meeting by asking Ramsey to please call the roll.
Fader.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Babcock Steiner.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Ford.
She's getting into the meeting right now.
Price.
Here.
Altman.
Here.
Ford. I see her. Julie, could you try again? Julie, can you hear us?
Just type in the chat if you can hear us.
I don't think she's there. We do have quorum. Give her a few more minutes if we could, and if we can't, we'll continue on, and then we'll note when she joins us.
All right. All right. Let us in you with a review of the meeting minutes from our September fourteenth meeting. Did everybody receive the meeting minutes and does anyone have a motion on those minutes?
Yeah, this is this is John. I'll I'll move that we approve those minutes, including the corrections that I sent to Ramsey Boehner.
Holly, I will forward those corrections to you.
I'll second the motion to approve. Any further discussion? All right, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
I was I was absent.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Try Julie again. Ford.
Having technical difficulties.
It seems to be that way.
Yeah.
Julie, do you hear us? We don't hear you. Could you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We're taking attendance. Let it be known that member Ford has joined the meeting. And we're now voting on the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes. Number four.
Yes.
Approved with corrections.
All right. Moving on to our public hearings before we have those Ramsey, can you confirm that the public have been properly advertised?
Yes, they were properly advertised. In the daily record of November tenth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Our first application tonight will be eleven P zero one dash twenty-one. It's the application twenty-nine hundred Monroe Avenue LLC. Chris Vogarty, Baldwin Realty, for site plan modification to construct a dumpster at twenty-nine hundred Monroe Avenue. Good evening, is Chris, are you here? Someone representing?
Yes, I'm here. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can see you. Yes.
Yes, we can, sir.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Great, thanks. If you could just give us a little a brief background, I think we.
Yeah.
We know the property, but.
Sure, this is this property is Flover Commons. It sits on twenty-nine hundred Monroe Avenue. The proposed plan, as you can see, there's a current existing dumpster enclosure. Set enclosures in very rough shape, mostly made of a wood enclosure with some metal fence beams. What we're proposing to do is rebuild that, take it apart and make it more of a masonry dumpster enclosure with some wood panel front doors. The new enclosure is slightly a little larger, not too much larger, large enough to fit both the recycling container and the garbage container inside of it. Right now, the the current enclosure is not big enough to house both containers. And we we don't like that. It's kind of an eyesore, and we'd like to. The owner really wants to fix that up, and we're in agreement that it desperately needs it. So it's also the way it's constructed currently. It's not ideal for the hauler to come in and pick up the the trash as efficiently and the ability to do it uninterrupted, to minimize interruption to the people in the parking lot and the businesses in the at the building. So so we're we're trying to just re slightly reorient the dumpster enclosure and rebuild it.
Jeff, I believe we have some renderings of this. Could you really scroll through that and just give folks an idea? And Chris, does does the does the brick match the building? Or are you you going to attempt to try to match?
I think they're the attempt. I think we're trying to get as close to it as possible. Yes, yes.
Are they actually bricks or are they blocks?
Um, I believe they're they're concrete block, actually, now that I think of it. I think it's concrete block.
Yeah, so you don't necessarily want to try to mimic the brick if you're.
Yeah, no, that's that's okay. I just.
Yeah. I just want to point out that it's it's more of a block.
Now that now that you put it this way, it does look like a block.
Yeah, it is kind of. Yeah, it is kind of weird how they just they change the color of the the block there. It must have been a rendering thing.
Is it is the block colored or what type of what's a block look like?
I don't I don't know for sure. I don't have that detail. I can probably get that pretty easily because the the guys within my organization are the ones that'd be doing it. So I could.
That's important. The other thing is that you have a very, very long gate swing. And the problem with the last dumpster enclosure is the gate did not survive well.
Okay.
And I'm curious of how that gate is going to work and be maintained and be kept closed. The other thing that I wanted to ask you is there going to be like a a person door in the side? So you could keep those gates closed and able to enter and put the trash in without having to open that gate?
I don't think that's currently in the plan. I certainly.
No, it's not. I was just asking, did you consider it? Because a lot of the dumpster enclosures we see have that feature, and it helps on the wear and tear of the gate.
It's certainly something that we could, yeah, look at. I don't see that being a huge ask. I can I can.
Ask just telling you to function it because the last dumpster had a lot of problems with those doors. And and you know, right now, you're orienting this more to the trail.
Yeah.
So those gates need to be kept closed.
Okay.
In a problem at that plaza.
Okay. I can I can do some.
Yeah, you need to really look at the actual detail of how it's going to be built.
Okay.
Those 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 gates could go on, could have heels on the bottom.
Yes, they could.
To help.
Yeah.
To help guide it.
I think that's what they're going to have to try to do.
Yeah, that's a long. That's quite a span to to get those not to sag over time.
No, even with the wheels that they they need, the more you use them, the more they get worn, and that's where I was saying, hey, would it would a door help at all? You know, so you just go in there through the just like a side door and you know, it's as much. Can I ask you why you changed the orientation of the dumpster?
I I think for for the sake of how the the traffic flow into the the parking lot and how it would be a little bit easier for a hauler to actually get in. Right now, the the garbage people have said that it's tough to get in and and in and out and 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 grabbing the container the way it's currently oriented.
How do they? How do they pick it up? Because you got one way going towards the dumpster. Are they ignoring the one way or?
No, they are going through the back. They are going through the back.
Going the wrong way on your the one way? Is that what they're doing?
No. So if you come off Clover and through the back of the property, that that one way is going towards the dumpster.
To the dumpster, and it's a front lift?
Yeah, it's a front. The the front of the dumpster is actually facing that one-way road. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep. So I mean.
Let's let them square up a little better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. I can see that now. That explains why they're doing that.
So I mean, it's it's more or less, you know, I think the biggest the biggest thing is it's an eyesore, the way it's currently sitting.
That is true.
And we the owner and and I kind of agreed that it needs to be fixed. And we want to do it in a way that's it's going to last more than a couple of years. So there's no better way to do that than a masonry enclosure. So.
Yeah, that's true.
So but I can certainly go back to the guys and 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 the architect and say, hey, can we explore these other options and see, see what we can do about that.
Yeah, and you may, they may understand what we're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And to think.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Are there any other board members that have questions of Chris?
Yeah, this is John. I noticed there's two dumpsters and two of those of little toders that are also alongside. There's a one of those dumpsters intended just for cardboard recycling, and then the toders for other type of.
Yeah, smaller, small, yep, smaller garbage. Yep. Yep. One's the large trash, one's the larger cycling, and the other toders are are for smaller.
Smaller recycling, like beverage bottles and.
Yeah, it's okay. All right, thank you. Yep.
The last thing I have to say, you're taking up two parking spots. You have vacancy right now.
Yeah.
Starbucks is left and they demand more parking than usual. Your next tenant that comes in, you're going to have to show how you meet the park code minus those two spots.
Yeah, I I think with this enclosure, we lose one spot. We would lose one spot based on what I saw on site. Because the way this is oriented, it's the the dumpster that's already there is already taking up like one half spot.
I see spots. I'm sorry. At least on the drawing, you split it.
Yeah, it's it's a little. I mean, it's we got it as close.
All I'm saying, you need to give us an engineer drawing or something a little bit more detailed than this. So we can get down to what exactly you're doing, because right now you are showing two faces.
Okay.
And you could be fine with that, but you have to understand with that, with the next tenant, you're going to have to, you know, either make up for that loss of parking or, you know.
Yeah.
Or something.
Yep. Okay.
Other board members have questions?
I'm I'm all set.
Thanks, Pam.
All set.
All set.
Okay, thanks, Julie. David Fader, you all set?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Great, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that cares to address this application? Please raise your hand or.
I don't see anybody.
All right. Well, if somebody does come up, we'll we'll let them speak. But for now, Chris, thank you.
My brother.
All right.
So Bill, if you could announce the the postponements to. Yes, I'm going to. Yeah. So on the agenda, if you if anybody's looking at it, we we now have new business and both application ten P N B one twenty-one for nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue Quickleys. They've asked to be postponed. And then application ten P N B two dash twenty-one, application of James Tabby for a project on on Highland Avenue, eight thirty Highland Avenue has asked to be postponed till our December fifteenth meeting. We now have an old business project, which is AP N B one dash twenty-one. This is the application of the University of Rochester for concept review. Revised plans to construct a fifty-five thousand square foot, three-story building as in addition to the laser light lab. That's on two fifty East River Road. Uh, let's see, I thought I saw David Cox.
Yep, I'm here.
David, good evening.
Good evening, board members. So I am here with, well, first, I'm David Cox with Pastoral Associates. I'm one of the owners and also the Civil Department Manager, Pastoral Associates. And also with me, we have a bunch of folks from U of R at differing positions to help answer any questions on regarding to that. We also have I have a couple other additional people from Pastoral Associates. And then we have Ashley and Jared from Nixon and Peabody to answer any any legal type questions. So I can kick it over to U of R to just give an opening statement. Clayton, are you there?
I am here. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that, David. Good evening. As David said, my name is Clayton Jones. I'm the Senior Director of Local Government and Community Relations here at the university. First, want to thank you so much for your time this evening and allowing us to come before you again to discuss this project around the lab for laser energetics. This project really reflects a true partnership between the university and the town. So we want to thank you for all of the engagement throughout this process so far, you know, going back seven months ago to May. We've had so much positive, good engagement with the town around this project and several concept presentations, the Conservation and Architecture Board presentations, several rounds of staff meetings, and certainly the Public Community Forum we held with the residents back in August. This level of engagement from the town is so important to the university, and we think it not only reflects the importance of our working relationship with the town, but also the importance of the project itself. We know the laser lab has a world-renowned reputation as a premier research facility, but arguably, its most important impact is felt right here at home in Rochester and Brighton. The laboratory partners with over fifty companies across the OPI industry generates eight hundred and fifty direct and indirect jobs and is responsible for sixteen million in local purchasing. And that's in addition to the many community partnerships and all the robust programming that goes on at the lab. I've talked before about the high high school partnership that we're very proud of, that brings STEM students into the state-of-the-art facility right here in their backyard, where they can receive hands-on learning experiences. But with that said, the university really considers itself fortunate that the lab is a part of this specific community. So before we get into the presentation, we just want to thank you again for your diligence and ensuring that the project moves along and in the correct fashion. And we look forward to the continued engagement and partnership with the town throughout this process. And we're appreciative appreciative again for some time on tonight's agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues who will continue to present on our plan. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Clayton.
All right. Thanks very much. Um, so I just just to start to let everyone know that this project does require site plan approval, a conditional use permit, and a woodlot EPOD. So those are all three things that we would be looking for from the planning board. Um, here on the the first slide, I just want to kind of give everyone a a background of the different types of engagement we've had with the town, starting in May twenty-fifth with the town staff workshop meeting. Then we were before the planning board on or we made our concept submission on July twentieth. We were before the planning board on August eighteenth. And then before the Conservation Board on the seventh of September, back to the planning board on September fourteenth, went before the Architectural Review Board on September twenty-eighth, which they were in favor of the of the architecture. And then on October twelfth, back to the Conservation Board, after we had made some modifications, which I'll talk about. They were much more favorable towards those modifications and changes that we made. We had another town staff workshop on the twentieth of October. And then here we are tonight, again, for another planning board concept meeting. And then the next meeting we're anticipating would be the December fifteenth Planning Board for Preliminary. Next slide.
David, I have a question for you.
Sure.
That you got A R B approval?
Yes.
So I don't see that you were approved.
Were approved.
They were approved?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I just want to give some some background and just let you go kind of go through some of the documents they went through from from the previous approvals. So it's kind of made up of three main documents. So you have the the Seeker Finding Statement, the IPD South Campus Regulations, and the amenity agreement. And then in addition to that is the DGIS, the FDIS, and SEIS documents as well that are that are back up. So I've gone through all of those, and I'm going to start by just kind of going through the the finding statement matrix. Jeff, you can go to the next slide. So we what we did, we went through every single page of the finding statement and looked at every item and put it down and then put a response to it if it if it needed a response. So the first part of the finding statement really just goes through the amenities. There were part of the amenity package. So there was a donation of a parcel of land. There was some agreement to the hundred-foot planning buffer. Elimination of no future access to Crittendon, some drainage improvements. Next page. Some more drainage, and then also an annual deposit to the Town of Brighton based on square footage. So as additional square footage is added, that's additional additional tax and revenue for the town there. The next, you can go to the next page. So the next, and then you can go again. So the next section was on topography, geology, and soils, which mostly has to do with wetlands and SWIP. So the first part has to do with that hundred-foot buffer. There's a hundred-foot buffer that needs to be preserved to the the southern residential area. So we are preserving that and staying well away from that, and also discusses about the wetlands. And I will get into more detail later in the presentation where we talk about wetlands. And then next page. The next is mostly all have to do with SWIP. So the SWIP is all handled with the preliminary application. So all those items are addressed in that SWIP that was submitted. We did do a geotechnical report on March twenty-fifth. We did that part of that. And then we go on to the next part, which is water resources. So they have all still a lot to do with SWIP and runoff and things like that. That's all items that we address in the SWIP. Next page. So here's again, it references, you know, make sure that Geotech is done, make sure channels are maintained, and all these other things are, you know, follow New York State D E C and town requirements for stormwater and in the SWIP. Yep, next page. And this one still has to do with with different drainage stuff that was completed and things to be addressed in the SWIP. Next page. More SWIP calculations. And then number three, it's into terrestrial and aquatic ecology. So that has to do with talking about the woodlot EPOD, which I did mention before, we do need a woodlot EPOD permit. We do have some disturbance about point six four acres to the woodlot EPOD. We have provided a tree mitigation plan that mitigates for the loss of those trees in the woodlot, as well as we have done a tree survey of that entire area, which is also part of the requirements of the finding statement in IPD. Next slide. Um, so I'll get to another part in my slide that'll talk about the old growth habitat. So there's some old growth forested areas that are a don't-touch area. The area that we are disturbing of the woodlot is newer growth. It's not part of this old growth area. So the wood grow or the old growth is still maintained. It mentions, you know, you got to have a mitigation plan, tree survey, all the things that we have provided. Next page. All right. And then the next section is specifically on wetlands. Just to give you a little taste, we did go out and have the the wetlands in the in the project limits delineated by a wetland biologist. Then the Army Corps of Engineers also came out to do a field delineation of that as well. And we have received a jurisdictional determination that that area is non-jurisdictional, so it is not under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps. But obviously, we are still trying to protect that area is as much as we can and also provide mitigation for any any disturbance, even though it is not a regulated by the Army Corps.
So David, are you telling us that because it is not a non-jurisdictional wetland, that you have right to disturb it? Is that is that the case you're making here?
No, I'm just I'm just making the case that the Army Corps does not have any jurisdiction.
Do you think the finding statement does, though, right?
The finding statement.
Right?
Yes.
You understand that I understand that you guys think it does not is not a non-jurisdictional. But the whole idea of the finding statement was going to go beyond some of those regulations to protect these areas and the wildlife and the uplands of these areas.
Yes.
For the issue of them being non-jurisdictional is helpful, but it's not your justification for. Them being non-jurisdictional is helpful, but it's not your justification for, for being able to go in there.
Yeah, I.
Okay, okay.
Um, the, this section also talks about the vernal pool. It was constructed, uh, we are um, not proposing any development within that vernal pool area. So that area will um, maintain protected.
Uh, David, you are, you guys aren't though disturbing the wetlands, right?
Yes, there's a portion of the wetlands, not the vernal pool though.
And, and Ramsey, just to follow up on your point and not to interrupt you David. Um, hi everyone, Ashley Champion, when you make some Peabody part of our team here. We fully recognize that, you know, the finding statement protected area is different than the wetlands delineation report. I think David's, um, you know, that. It is non-jurisdictional, any core or D E C permit or any sort of, of work um, through. The state or federal agencies as far as mitigation, it would just be strictly based on the finding statement protected area. And whatever mitigation the town thought was appropriate there, but that is why it's called out here. Um, and why we are proposing mitigation if, if uh, you know, it was just, if we were just relying on, on a wetland, we wouldn't. Need any mitigation, but because the town has the area as protected in its finding statement, we are proposing mitigation for both. That disturbance and the upland area disturbance.
Well, um, Ashley, could you tell me that the wetland that's was proposed to be protected? Some of that is being disturbed. Are we going to have the same amount of wetland area when we're done here? Cause I think the proposal is not to establish the amount of wetland that was in the finding statement.
So.
David will get into.
You're basically saying you want to reduce the wetland area. Is that what you're asking us?
No, we, we are more than.
Replacement. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, so.
It's a replacement.
Right, our, our, our intent is to, you know. Have a mitigation plan, working with the planning board and town staff, you know, that is satisfactory to the town. Um, if the, if the town wants a, you know, to maintain the acreage from that original. We can, we can make that accommodation.
But right, I mean, is, what are you proposing? Let's try that because my understanding is that that's not what you were proposing. And that, and then I'm going to go on to some other parts as it deals with these wetlands that were mapped. As part of the original D E I S. There are other wetlands in that area. So we have the proposed facility that we want built now. And then you uh, showed us another bubble of the area where you want additional buildings. With that bubble, you are showing access roads. A few of them. What I'm trying to understand is one, is how that development that you're proposing interrelates with the rest of the master plan. Cause that is something we did ask for, is that we want a big view. How, what are you proposing relates to the current plan, master plan that was originally reviewed by the town? And so we can understand the impacts. Because what you gave us, I still think is having those impacts that we originally started with. I'm also seeing what you submitted, not really mitigating the loss of the wetland. So I just wanted to present my review of the information that you gave us. I'm also presenting my understanding of the information that was submitted for the preliminary application. And my understanding that this is what we're going to go with. And the reason I bring this up, I think this is an important topic. Because I think the information that has been presented has fallen short. I don't mean to stop David's presentation, but we got to this point. Of the finding statement and we're still talking about it.
Ramsey, there's, there's another problem that's coming. I wasn't saying anything because I was going to let David finish. But I'm looking, not at the finding statement, I'm looking at the thing they sent out with the nice little pictures. And there's sort of a, a conflict here that I don't understand. So should I bring that up now or should I just wait?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that section. I have, I have maps and, and other things. I have a specific section in my presentation. To talk about that. So I think that would be the optimum time. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, please continue, David. I'd, I'd like to hear the totality of the issues that we have. I've got the checklist started. And uh, let's, let's get through them all. So we all know the, all of the issues uh, associated.
That's right. That's, that is important, Bill. You're right.
Thank you.
See, thank you.
Okay, um, so uh, next page. Uh, so this has to do with stormwater and New York State D C requirements. Um, so we can, and then the wetland, which we'll talk about later. Next slide. Uh, it's still talking about the wetland and we'll talk about the wetland mitigation plan, the vernal pool, how we avoid that area. And next up is land use and zoning. Next slide. Um. So this has to do with the master plan, which I do have, I have a slide in my presentation later to really talk about the. The master plan. Uh, this next section talks about the hundred foot buffer that we are maintaining. As well as a building height. So the area we're in has a max building height of seventy five feet. We're proposing fifty five feet, so we are below that maximum height requirement. Um, the next part talks about some sidewalks. Um, they have been installed. We can go to the next page. Um, so this gets into talking about maximum density allowance. So there's one point two nine million square feet allowed on the institutional portion of the south campus. Um, we're right around five hundred thousand, so we're below that requirement. And then the south residential part of the south campus has additional square footage for a total of two point five-ish. Uh, million square feet total and we're well below those, both of those thresholds. Uh, next slide. Uh, there's no um. Chemicals or biological agents that we have to deal with that talks about in that section. Um, and it just, it references that, you know, each individual incremental development needs to come back before the plane board for approval. Which what we're doing. Next slide. Uh, so this talks about building height again. And then I, I'll talk about the I P D code in my next section. So next slide. Uh, so all that L L E additions will be lead silver. So we are following, following that process. Um. Bird collisions, it talks about reflective glass. So we have reflective glass curtain walls are not proposed. Uh, talks about lead more. There won't be any, you know, additional noise from this project than, than what, you know, you would currently have out there already. We are proposing L E D lighting. So that matches, uh, fact that you gotta go to the A R B, which we did do. And then the next section is historical and archaeological resources. Next slide. So we did prepare a phase one A and one B cultural resource investigation. It was performed by Powers Archaeology. Uh, we did that report and you have that, that's been submitted and we submitted that to Shippo. Shippo reviewed that and they issued a no impact letter. So there was no uh, anything of cultural significance found. Uh, the one hundred foot buffer is brought up again, uh, which we're well away from. Traffic is up next. Next slide. Um, next slide. So there's. A five-year traffic study. So the U of R is required to do a, every five years, they need to do a traffic. Impact update. So the last one they did was in twenty eighteen. Uh, but it, it actually never went through the formal process of being approved by Brighton. So we are in the process of making sure that that is approved. Uh, the town has reached out to Stan Tech to be their engineer to go through that. Once we receive any comments from Stan Tech, Fisher is the one who prepared that five-year traffic study. They will be updating that five-year plan to make sure that Brighton is, is satisfied with that five-year. And then the update will be due in twenty twenty-three for the next five-year traffic study update. Uh, but in regards to just this specific addition, we did reach out to Monroe County D O T and New York State D O T both. And they both have confirmed that a traffic study is not, an additional traffic study is not warranted for this building addition. Um. By clean, oh, that they're talked about shuttle service, that they're, the U of R does have shuttle service. That runs between south campus and their main campus and all around there. Next slide. Um, R G R T A. So the, in, just to update everyone with R T S. So in, because of COVID, uh, and ridership changes and that really impacted them a lot in May of twenty twenty-one. Uh, changes were made and they changed routes and things like that. Uh, previously, U of R was paying for R T S stops at East River Road, Latimore and Sawgrass. Uh, but even with U of R paying for these stops, there was still a lack of bus drivers and they, you, uh. R T S still ended up dropping off some of the bus services. Um, U of R was able to work to maintain service down Elmwood Ave. And as I mentioned, U of R still does provide shuttle service between river campus, medical campus and south campus. Um, and we did confirm with Fisher Associates on the five-year traffic study. That they did not take any discounts for R T S service. So they, they were conservative in their, in their analysis. Um, alright, next slide, utilities and energy. So the water authority, which I will also is further in my presentation with maps to make it more clear. But the, the finding statement did reference with south, the, south campus that. Um, two different water connections, a twelve inch main from Crittendon Road. In, up the Lehigh Valley Trail over to Merlin and an eight inch connection to West Henryetta Road. Um, so like I said, later in the presentation, I've reached out to the water authority, have clarification on that, maps to kind of show you where that is. Um, and water calculations. Okay, next slide. Is the L L E or laser lab is in a sewer district. So that's all taken care of. Uh, the utility analysis was conducted and the engineers report. Uh, the next is emergency access. So there's not really any changes to access for the property. Um, all the existing access points to public infrastructure or public roads is still maintained. Uh, but we are providing a. Fire department turnaround south of the building addition, uh, they would use for fire access. Uh, next slide. Community and neighborhood character. Um, talks about the master plan, uh, which we'll. Talk about later and then this, the one hundred foot buffer is brought up again, which we are maintaining and staying, staying way away from that. Next slide. Alright, um, more master plan, uh, talks about the amenities. Uh, which the amenities were, were taken care of and addressed. Police, fire, ambulance and impacts. So um, there's very little impact or no impact uh, to that. Why, as I was saying, that this addition uh, doesn't really create much of, much of any additional demand on those emergency services at all. Next slide. Uh, schools, there's not really any, an impact to the, to the schools. There's no residential component. Uh, as part of this project. Recreation opportunities is the next. Um, that the connection to the Lehigh Trail is, was put in previously. We're staying away from the old growth areas. Next slide. Yeah, growth induced inducement aspects. Next slide. Okay, so yeah, those are taken care of. So that goes kind of item by item with the finding statement. Uh, the next item is part of that, that three-pronged uh, documents is the I P D. Regulations. Next slide. Uh, so on August thirty first, we did provide a letter. That highlighted and went through a lot of the I P D regulations and broke that down. Next slide. That letter did provide uh, kind of the I P D history in the backup of when certain items were approved. And kind of gives a running storyboard, you know, going back to October two thousand and one of what happened. Next slide. And then moving all the way through up to twenty fourteen, when the board accepted the S D I S. Next slide. And then we uh, get into the, the I P D code analysis. So it references the amenities that the finding statement also referenced, a donation of land, planting and has enhancements. Elimination of access to Crittendon, uh, revised storm sewer connections, construct a berm. Uh, to help flooding and an outlet structure on the south wetland to control water surfaces. Uh, next slide. So. Um. Here we get, really get into uh, the meet with the, the compliance of the south campus. Uh, next slide. So here's that uh, zone map that was referenced between the residential and the institutional, if you will. So the blue is institutional and the yellow is residential. So those are the kind of the, the different two zones that make up the south campus. Next slide. Uh, here's that protected zone map. I know it's a little hard to see. There's some green blobs. On the, on the left side. That's that old growth forest I was talking about. Uh, with the mature trees, the older trees that uh, definitely want to be protected and. Uh, the laser lab is kind of more in the, in the center towards the top right. Yep, right in there. So we are well away from those old growth. Areas not having any impact to those. And then at the bottom is that hundred foot landscape buffer. So that was also that hundred foot buffer that came up throughout the multiple documents. Uh, we are staying well away from that and preserving that. Uh, we want to make sure to have a nice buffer to those residential area, residential homes to the south. Next slide. Um, so the I P D also references. Permitted uses and conditional uses. So conditional uses here, number three, research laboratories for instruction, research and development involving biological, chemical, radiological. Or energy studies. Uh, so that's where this L L E addition fits in. So we are a conditional use and that's why we need that conditional use permit. Next slide. So in my November third letter, um, you can go down, scroll down one more. I. Issue or I wrote out the town code, section two seventeen seven has standards governing conditional uses. So there's um, A through G or something like that of, of the different items that you need to look at. The board needs to look at uh, for the conditional uses. So the planning board. I'll wait for Jeff to, there, there, makes it easier to read. Um. The planning board shall find that the request is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, taking into account the location and size of use. The nature and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with the use and size of the site with respect to streets giving access there too. So the proposed project is a building addition to support existing use, provided high quality jobs, research and government funding to Brighton. Uh, the property will be utilized in the same manner that it's being utilized today. Uh, so not any change in. Uh, so not any change in, in operation or use. Uh, the next is the maintenance and operation of the use applied for under the circumstances of a particular case will not be detrimental to the health, safety or general welfare, wa- welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use or will not be detrimental or injurious to the property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the town. So it is a, a building addition to an existing facility, uh, that there's not going to be any health or safety, welfare concerns from this project and where the project will meet all applicable federal, state, local guidelines. Next page. The next one is will not result in the destruction, loss, damage of any natural scenic or significant historical resource. Uh, so there's not any significant historical resource. The next is will not create excessive additional requirements of public cost for public facilities and services. And will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. Uh, so as I mentioned before, one of the amenities is, uh, the LLE actually uh, provides money, um, to the town. So it's actually going to be an, an increase in giving back. And as I mentioned, there's very little additional, uh, need on schools or emergency services or anything like that. Uh, E is the proposal will be served adequately by essential public facilities such as highways, streets, fire protection, stormwater, schools and, and all the existing, uh, in proposed facility will continue to be served by all those essential public facilities. Or they're already there, they're already in place. Uh, F, the proposal will not result in unmitigated destruction or loss or an unmitigated damage of trees. So that is where, since we do have some loss to the woodlot EPOD, we need to have a proposed tree mitigation plan to mitigate the loss of those trees, which we have provided and, uh, I'll talk further about and later in my presentation. And then G is conforms to the town master plan. Um, so it's a world-class facility, creating jobs, education, it's a vibrant economic develop, or climate. Um, so that all ties in, uh, with the master plan of, of creating those things. So that's the conditional use permit. Uh, next slide. I do have to say, Jeff, you're pretty good that, uh, you're doing better than I would do if I was trying to do this. Um, here's a, a wetlands map that was part of the IPD. Um, it shows the wetlands on the property, the ones on the, kind of the furthest to the south and west, that is the New York State DEC wetland that was referenced and has that 100-foot buffer. Uh, the other wetland to the north of that is a federal wetland. And then the wetlands, uh, that I spoke of, uh, that we had delineated right near the LLE property are shown right there. Next slide. So here's a maximum height map. So the institutional zone has different height requirements than residential. So the blue is the resident, or the institutional having the 75-foot max height, the residential having the 50-foot max height. And to reiterate, our building's 55 feet, so we are below that 75-foot max height requirement. Next slide. Next part in the IPD is talks about development in woodlot EPOD areas. So if you're going to do any disturbance in woodlot EPOD, you need a woodlot EPOD permit from the planning board. So next page. So, uh, this is the, kind of the requirements in the town code for, for require, you know, for woodlot EPOD and protection. So you need to have a tree survey performed, which we have done in that tree mitigation plan. You need to specify, you know, trees being lost versus trees being removed, which we provided a plan showing that. A landscaping plan, it, that is our tree mitigation plan. Um, and the integrated site plan to protect the woodlot. And then the other specific practices are notes that, uh, we put on our plans. You know, that maintenance of landscaping, you know, has to have a three-year guarantee and certain types of fertilizer and things like that. So we follow all those requirements from the code. Next slide. And then there is some parts in the codes, um, the IPD talking about facade and architectural stuff, which was addressed at the ARB. And then there's also, it talks about signage and signs where we're just doing a building addition that we're not changing. We're not putting any new monument signs. There's not any new signage for the project, so, uh, don't have anything to do there. Uh, the next thing is sustainability in the IPD. And there is, if you scroll down to the next slide, there's five different areas of sustainability that, um, we need to look at. The first having to do with nature, which is honor, protect and connect habitat. Stream and river corridors minimize disturbance of wetland, woodlot habitat to the extent practical, practical. So, um, we have a wetland mitigation plan. And then also, if you remember, one of our earlier concepts, we had a 100-car parking lot in that woodlot area uh, that after feedback from this board and the conservation board was, you know, can you put that parking elsewhere and save that woodlot? So we have removed that, uh, to preserve that woodlot even further. The next is building mass should allow daylight into active outdoor spaces. So the east facade of the building allows for daylight and access to view for the majority of workspaces. Lab spaces are concentrated on the interior and are explicitly located there to control the interior environment. Uh, the use of native landscape palette as much as possible. So our tree mitigation and landscaping plan uses native plants. Uh, the next is energy, maximize daylight opportunities in building with a balance of solar gain, glare and energy use. The east facade features have vertical shading fins to limit the impacts of solar gain and interior shades provide protection from glare. Reduced energy loads on buildings by design, equipment selection, use, operation guidelines. Uh, building energy use has a heavy impact on our environment and climate during the, the design of this project. We have used whole building design energy simulations to identify and implement energy conservation measures. As a result, the project is designed by achieving 11% energy cost reduction from the ASHRAE 90.1 baseline. Uh, the next is people. Incorporate ideals of park once transit, transit oriented pedestrian and bicycle friendly campus. Uh, so LLE has bike racks, sidewalks, uh, we have vehicle charging stations for emergency vehicles and also amenities inside for bicyclists. Next is incorporate alternative means of transportation, including municipal transit and university shuttles, bicycles, carpooling. Um, so we, the, like I've mentioned before, the U of R does have, has she called shuttle campuses that go around, uh, the, the LLE has around 100 students that actually work at the LLE and almost all of them use that shuttle service from the, from the university campus down to here. Uh, and we also have, uh, the ch- charging stations, which I mentioned before, and bike racks and things like that. Um, next up is water. So develop a campus-wide onsite stormwater management practice to adjust quality and quality runoff. So we have that, there's an existing stormwater pond just southeast of the laser lab. That is our quantity treatment. And then we also are putting in bio-retention areas, uh, to treat stormwater quality. It's part of that. Reduce potable water through conservation. The project will have, you know, you know, water efficient, low flow and, um, toilets and fixtures and things like that to help reduce water and preserve. There's also no permanent irrigation for LLE. So, and that is, we are going to maintain that, uh, to have that low water use as well. The next is materials. Choose environmentally sustainable materials and process whenever possible. So the team has, will perform a whole bull, whole building lifecycle assessment to demonstrate a reduction in environmental impact categories included, including embodied carbon emissions. Building product so, selection will emphasize material transparency by requiring environmental product declarations and health product declarations. Building product selection will prioritize those which meet the following criteria. Regionally sourced, recycled content, extended producer responsibility and FSC certified wood. Um, and then obviously, anything we can do to divert things going to the landfill uh, during construction, recycling, anything like that will be used and local materials, uh, wherever we can find, for sure. Um, and that, uh, is everything on that. Next slide. All right, now we are into the architecturals. So you can go to the next slide and I'm going to hand this over to Mike DeLuca at Canon to talk about architecture.
Thank you. Thanks, David. So we wanted to, um, give a few facts about why we're looking at locating the building where we have located it. So we, we put together nine little diagrams here to give you some of the insight of how this got moved about. So item one is really the most important piece for us. Um, the north-south bar, um, that you see on the page is the laser bay for the current laser. That, that arrow that goes north-south, um, is where the laser expansion from a, um, operational standpoint is critical. So any future work, any, um, evolution of the research with the lasers requires that any building for future development is right there. So the building we're building right now is support labs and support offices for a future laser building. And it is critical that, that, that location, that's the hinge to everything to be successful for them to do their laser work in the future. So that, that's item number one. Um, number two, we, circulation was really important to trying to connect back uh, circulation within the existing building, um, was a pivotal part of the discussion. We want to make sure we connect back to the, some of the loading docks, uh, area and also some of the operational spaces for offices to the north. Um, item number three, we try to utilize the existing stairs. We want to reduce the amount of building we're, footprint we're putting there. And by reutilizing the existing stairs, we're able to reduce the need to construct more. Number four, again, that's pivotal like number one, that is the loading dock that supports this addition, that supports the current laser and any future, um, additions. That, that is the heart kind of, of the operational means of bringing goods in and out of the laser facility. Um, number four, which I would link to one, four and five are the critical pieces. These spaces support the adjacent research labs. So the research labs in blue are existing. The research labs in yellow, uh, in the new building are to support those. So all of these pieces on, um, one, four and five affect the research that occurs in the building today and the future and any future additions. Jeff Key, please go to the next slide. We also looked at entry. Um, we have, they have a very nice public entry that currently exists on the northeast side. It's associated to the existing parking lot where people come and visit. There is a, um, public area as soon as you come in the building with the vertical atrium and, um, um, community space within there. So we, we wanted to maintain that as is. Uh, we also looked at reducing the amount of exterior wall to, uh, perform the highest energy efficiency of the building. The less exterior wall you build, the better, the higher the performance will be. So putting it within that section of the existing building, uh, reduces the amount of exterior wall we have to build. Also, number eight, by building it in the southeast corner, we're reducing any visual, um, uh, any view of mechanicals from the road, from East River. So all the mechanicals for this building, as you'll see when we show in the future renderings, any of the building will not be seen from East River Road. And that was the intent of it. Um, and then there's the, just the efficiencies of mechanical systems. We're supporting the existing building by putting in this point, um, at this point, we could support the mechanical systems that exist in that are new and the most efficient way. Next slide, please. So this here, I'm going to go through the renderings. We showed these at previous meetings. Um, these were presented to ARB and approved. Um, but I want to walk through them one more time. So the building is similar materials, um, to the existing campus, brick curtain wall, um, in glass. Those are the main components and the scale of the building, as David said, is very similar in height to the existing with the mechanical, um, portion of the top, only piece, um, coming up above the existing building, but not higher than the highest point of the existing building. And also is not visible from East River Road. Next slide, please. This is the southeast, uh, looking north, you know, if you're standing on the southeast side, looking north at the building. Um, what you'll see here is we have a larger metal, um, panel wall in this location. Um, and our metal panels on, on the building already, and the intent here is to set this building up for future expansions for future laser supports, future lab support. So this wall is a permanent, um, um, material, but panelized material, but easy, easily removed. And as you'll see in the glass slot on the left side, there is essentially the idea that you could expand the existing hallways and maintain an existing efficient, um, operation. So it's very much about, um, connecting to the existing building and, and supporting the existing lab research and, and allowing them to grow their lab research and operations. Next slide, please. This gives, um, greater detail in the materials to share with you. Um, on the top, that is the south elevation, that is the metal panels. On the left of that will be, would be the existing brick area and glass, again, scale very similar. And we're using the same, um, glass and brick material. The lower, the lower elevation is the east elevation, shows the curtain wall, which is aligned by offices and working area. Uh, uh, clever, collaborative area, excuse me, um, and maintains, uh, the same stone cells, curtain wall, kind of the campus brick, um, and metal panel. Uh, next slide, please. So we also wanted to show what this meant, and you might have to zoom in a little on this, what this meant for East River Road. So the top image here you're looking at, we took kind of a simple Google Earth where, yeah, it flattens the landscape. The grave, there's no trees on it and there's no berm there, as you'll see in the lower picture. The gray building is the existing and as you could see with the, um, brick and curtain wall in the far distance, that is the addition. So it's very, very minimal from the street with no landscape. And then if you go to the, uh, lower image. We made it yellow, so you'd be able to get it to pop out, but there's trees, there's berm, it's set way back from the road and, um, really won't be visible unless you get right within a perfect spot. Uh, over to the right. We are, okay, I do that all the time. No problem. So we're also, we also gave, um, views looking from the east back to the west, from the imaging center. Um, so as you go along East River Road, if you're coming back the other way, you ju- you won't see the building as it's set back, um, behind the trees and the berm. And if you go to the very top image. That's a little closer, again reinforcing the fact that this is set way off the road in an area, um, that's well landscaped and set back. Um, next slide, please. So David, I'm going to hand it back to you here to walk through these.
So I just wanted to give a, kind of a, a brief overview of, uh, the first site plan you saw. Uh, they had a access road to the east of the building addition and that 100-car parking lot in the back. So quite a large disturbance, uh, to the woodlot EPOD area and also had disturbance to the vernal pool. Um, so we heard some feedback. And then we, uh, and if you go to the next slide. We removed that access road and put the fire turnaround just to the south of the proposed building addition and, uh, reduced the impact to that vernal pool. Uh, but this still had, this was a second iteration, but then we, at this meeting, we said, hey, can you get rid of that? That parking lot. So then that brought us to a, where we stand now, where we are, you know, no parking back there. No, you know, no root road looping around there. So really preserving those trees. Next slide. So this one just shows some of the, uh, go back up one, shows some of the things that were, you know, uh, the conservation board had brought up low mo, no mo, bio native planting areas. Uh, so we're incorporating those in some different areas. Um, and to have a nice, a nice buffer around that wooded area uh, that it flows into a more taller grass opposed to just straight lawn, which is better for, for habitat, for sure. Uh, next slide. All right, so this is the master plan. So when I spoke to U of R in, went through, you know, what are all? Went through, you know, what are all the kind of, you know, possible? You know, projects that could happen, you know, what is anything and everything that you know about? So these are the. Future development that is potential that could possibly happen. All that would be dependent on funding. And I've kind of circled in yellow here. Mike DeLuca spoke about that, that critical point. With some of the laser and equipment that those future additions are really equipment. Heavy and that there needs to be some collaboration in close proximity. So that is a very critical. Part of the building so that we see any of those future potential developments. Looked around there in that close proximity. And I've kind of added a circle on the red. I should have been added to this plan showing the vernal pool. And the the wetland area would be around that vernal pool area. Our, our intent is that we would stay outside those. Those wetland areas. Alright. Next slide. Now we're on to wetlands. So as I mentioned, there was a, we did a wetland delineation. Recently in the IPD also references that every five years. You know, if you do a project that the wetland delineation is only good for five years, so it needs to be renewed. So we had been over five years. So we had a woodland delineation, the Army Corps came out and they issued their. Non-jurisdictional determinations. You can scroll down a couple, quite a few. That's just the full. JD from the Army Corps that we received. One more. So this, go back up one more. There it is. Just that's the area kind of. Has a hatch to it and a darker area. Showed. So that's the wetland area right there. Yep. Okay, next slide. So the other thing we had the wetland biologists do was go out there. And, you know, give us a feel of what is the. Quality of the wetland, you know, so we have the limits. So we know that the quantity and the size, but we don't have any, anything on the quality. So he went out there and did a field investigation and then issued this letter in. He came back saying that the wetland is is low quality because of invasive fragmites. Fragmites is a very invasive plant that we deal with kind of all over here and it just, it comes in and just takes over and wrecks havoc. On. On habitat and really degrades functional habitat quite a bit. So, and then he also referenced that he did not see any. Wildlife while he was out there, but he did say that the area is supportive. Of some breeding amphibians, red winged blackbirds, possibly raccoon feeding habitat. And also some, you know, standard squirrel chipmunk, you know, things like that. So his recommendation. Was number one is to get the fragmites out of there. That that will just continue to degrade that wetland area. So he is recommending you go in there and you actually excavate out that fragmites. I think to, you know, three inches so or below, make sure you get the roots out. Get all that fragmites out of there and then plant it with some better, more native wetland. Plantings so that you can, you know, restore the functional habitat to the, to the wetland area. He also. Mentioned adding some fallen logs and some boulders. That amphibians like to overwinter under fallen logs and rocks and things like that. As well as amphibians like the, they like the transition from forest to grassland. That is a critical component. So that's why he recommended, you know, having some of the the no mo or low mo. Wildflower seed mix, higher grass area around the wooded area. So that was his. His letter. Next slide. So here's a. Our wetland plan. So there's two, we showed, there's a, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a blue line which shows the, the. IPD 2013 Wetland L is what it's referred to in the, in the IPD. That's in blue shown right there. And then in red is the new delineation. So very similar shape and size, but just the wetland has evolved slightly. In the last seventeen year or seven years, I mean. So there's a slight change there and kind of the, there's a finger at the top left of that wetland area. And that is the, the portion that would be disturbed is part of this project. So about point zero five acres of disturbance. To that area. And that's where we want to enhance. That entire wetland as, as the wetland biologist Gene had mentioned. So we want to take that whole, you know. Point four two, four two acres and enhance that. Completely with the new native plantings, get rid of the fragmites, add the boulders and the logs in. And then also the. No mo and low mo metal mix is kind of in the, the pinkish magenta color. We also have it kind of tying into between that stormwater pond. So the stormwater pond is what's shown to the left. It's kind of. Make like a backward C shape. So that'll, with those higher grasses, that'll give a nice transition for amphibians to go from that wooded area or that wetland area to the stormwater pond. Where they're not going through mowed grass, low grass. Where there could be more predators and things like that, or they could be seen by birds. So. Gives them a little more shelter to get to that stormwater management area. Alright, next slide. Now we're on to utilities. Utilities, the, there's a gas main, a new gas main that we're going to run. Kind of from the top of the page that's going to come down and tie in. There's existing sanitary sewer in real close proximity. So we just need to have a real short stub to tie into the sanitary. There's some storm sewer that's running through kind of where the, that turnaround is just south of the building, kind of the stone hatch area. That we're going to reroute that storm sewer around that to, you know, to try to make room for that future, possible future expansion area. And then there's also some water main that runs through this area. So we're going to relocate that water main as well around that area. And then. Think that covers, and then I'll get into water. I think the next slide gets more into water. Okay. So we issued a water analysis. That talked about those two connections from the finding statement, the water main connection to the West Henrietta Road. And the water main connection to the Crittendon Road. So there's two, I'll go to the next slide. And next slide. Oh, back up one. So this is the letter that is referenced in the IPD in the finding statement from 2014 from the Water Authority. Referencing those two connection points. On next slide. Here's just a map that went along with that letter. Next, I don't need to. Next slide. So this is, I reached out to the Water Authority just for clarification. On those two connections and when they were, would be required. So they got back to me in those two connections. Are, are need based or demand based. So if you need to make those connections to support whatever project you're working on, then they're required. Down at the bottom, it says if you run your analysis and you can just put in some pumps and you don't need to make any of those connections. Then you don't need to make those connections. After we ran. Our water analysis, we feel that there's a, well, and the results show that there's a real benefit. To, to the eight inch connection off West Henrietta Road. So if you go to the next slide. So the, whoa, back up one. So there's an area in red, kind of in the center of the page, that is where LLE is. And that is all in the six seventy pressure zone. So that's a lower pressure zone. And then there's a, a cyan color to the east. That is the higher pressure. So that's in the seven fifty one pressure zone. So. We want to make a connection to that higher pressure zone. So to be able to pull in water from there, because the lower pressure zone, the static pressures are low. The capacity is not, is great. So making a connection. To that higher pressure zone actually boosts pressure and flow for the LLE. And because of that higher pressure. That it's the, the LLE property and the imaging building are going to then pull. Water from that higher pressure zone instead of the lower pressure zone. So under the domestic scenario. We're actually going to free up. About 230 gallons per minute of domestic flow from this lower pressure zone. So the neighborhood to the south, it's in the pressure zone. In the lower pressure zone, right now, Laser Lab and you, and the imaging building are pulling water from that. That area where after we make this connection, where the majority of water is going to be pulled from that higher pressure zone. So it's going to reduce. Or free up, reduce the amount we're pulling from that lower pressure zone. So freeing up capacity. In that lower system. So it is a benefit to the surrounding community as well as U of R. Next slide. So this shows the water main connection. So that is West Henrietta Road on the right side. And right down there at the bottom is our connection to that higher pressure system. Will run a main down West Henrietta Road. And then come over to the imaging building property where it'll go through an RPZ and meter. And then run through the imaging property and connect into the water main loop. In the imaging property. So the imaging and laser lab are all on the same water loop. So we'll tie directly into that. So that's that West Henrietta Road connection. Next slide. So we are, we are not proposing at this time the Crittendon. Connection, but we wanted to put it in here. So it was part of the record and understood what that is. So it's shown in red here. So there would be a connection to Crittendon Road Water Main, which is all in the lower pressure system. It would run up the Lehigh Belly Trail. And then would take a sharp right and run over and tie into Merlin Drive. So right now there is already an existing connection to Crittendon. There's a connection to East River. There's connections to West Henrietta that this whole area is looped pretty well. So by making this 12 inch connection, since you're making a connection to the lower pressure zone. It doesn't really, it doesn't have any benefit on pressures. So this doesn't provide any pressure benefit. It does provide some. Flow benefit, but not as much as you would hope because the system is so looped and it is pulling water from so many different directions. It's playing from East Rivers, pulling from Crittendon, from the neighborhood to the south. I mean, all the water mains are looped together. That's what you want in a water system. Is the more looped it is, the less losses you have in your system. So that's the, the Crittendon, but that is, we are not proposing that connection right now. That connection will come later. More when the residential area of the south campus gets built out, then that, that connection would be warranted. Alright, next slide. Just to show that we did. Supply the fire apparatus access and fire department worksheet. Don't really need to touch on that, but I did want to just point out that is a town requirement. We did submit that. You can scroll through that, Jeff. Alright, next up is cultural resource investigation. Next slide. So as I was mentioning, we did submit that phase one, A, one, B, cultural resource investigation. And we did receive the letter back this from Shippo. That's what this is saying that. They have reviewed the report and they have issued a no impact letter. So no cultural resource issues out there. Next slide. Alright, traffic access and parking. Okay, so these are the letters I referenced where we reached out to New York State DOT. And this is their response back that a traffic study is not required. And then if you go to the next slide. We have the same one. This is from Monroe County DOT right at the top there. No traffic impact report is needed. Keep scrolling. We did support a parking demand analysis that goes through the current. So right now, there's about 390 employees out there. And there's only 347 parking spaces. So there's already a deficit of parking spaces to employees. And then with this. Project, it will be adding additional. We're thinking close to 50 when it's fully up and running. So that'll bring us up to 440 employees. And that's, that's a full time, that's not including the students. There's about another hundred students. That also come, like I mentioned, a lot of those do use the shuttle service though. So we don't need to have parking for them. Scroll down. So you can keep, go to the next page, sorry. Just more stuff on that. So, so yeah, just highlights the parking spaces. So with the, we are. Proposing 100 spaces kind of scattered out throughout around the existing areas. And this will meet the, the needs of the, of the building addition. And we feel it will meet the needs of the, you know, the second building addition as well. Next slide. Alright, stormwater design. Next slide. So this really shows kind of the scattered parking. So we have some scattered parking on the, on the left. Side and the red kind of oval there is where we're going to have our, our RV. So we'll have our bio retention areas for, to do stormwater quality. And then we have more parking on the complete opposite side on the east side where we're adding to the existing parking lot and we'll have. Some stormwater quality and bio retention area at kind of the bottom right of that parking area. And then the building. Bio retention area is just east. There's another third red circle. So that's the other bio retention area. So we'll be treating stormwater in both of those. And then. Just to left of that last circle, there is that horseshoe stormwater pond. So that's our, our quantity that. The stormer dumps into there. Next slide. We're getting there. Landscape and lighting. Next slide. I think you might have skipped over one. Can you go back up? Perfect. So we did a tree survey or U of R did a tree survey on the entire property. And then we show in red. The area where there's going to be tree removal, we tally that up. So there's 93 trees. That are being removed. In this, a lot of these are, it's new growth. Area. Next slide. Jeff, you're doing a great job, by the way, like really. I heard that you're, you're a master and that is true. So here is our, our landscaping mitigation plan that we really kind of spread out the landscaping. And have a, we took, you know, looked for areas where it was, there was gaps or. Or areas that needed to be filled in. So we're really kind of beautifying the whole, the whole place. So. Right now, we're, you're taking out some of the trees kind of way in the back that are all congregated together. And we're mitigating by really spreading that out over the whole campus to really beautify and help fill in. Those areas there. Can't really see the lighting, but the lighting will be LED dark sky compliant. It'll have shields to, you know, to direct light. It'll have shields to, you know, to direct light in the area that we want. And it will be three thousand Kelvin color temperature per town code. So that'll meet all the, the lighting requirements. And the lights will be, you know, we'll need some lights at the new parking areas. And then some building mounted light around the doors and entryways. Next slide. All right, town staff comments. Next slide. So just wanted to say on October sixth, we did respond to town staff comments. That I think there's six pages are here. I don't need to go through them, but just know that we did address those and submit those. And there's no outstanding comments that I'm aware of that we have not addressed from the town. So that addresses all those. All right, and then seeker. One more slide. So just kind of a highlight recap of all the things we talked about and hit with seeker. Health, safety, air quality. There's really no impact, no change from the IPD visual. Very small impact. We did the visualization showed, you know, that for the most part, you're not really going to be able to see the building. Except in some very specific points, but it's really tucked in behind. So there's very little visual impact. Traffic and transportation. We showed that there's no, you know, no additional traffic study is required for the New York State DOT or MCDOT. And no changes to access. We did provide that parking demand analysis. Social and economic impacts, no change to the IPD. The proposed addition will generate additional economic growth and jobs. So that is a benefit. Topography, geology and soils. Have the, we've had mitigation plans prepared and submitted for our impact to the woodlot EPOD in our point zero five acre wetland disturbance that we're mitigating for that. And then water resources, stormwater. Really just utilizing the existing stormwater that's in sight and then providing that quality treatment around there. So that's all taken care of there. No change to land use or zoning. Historical and archaeological resources. We did our Shippo or our phase one, A, one, B, cultural resource investigation, ship, but we should have no impact letter. Utilities and energy. We're doing that water system connection to the higher pressure zone, which will boost water and pressure for the LLE and imaging and as well as, you know, free up capacity of that surrounding low pressure system in the, the surrounding neighborhood to the south. So it's a benefit to the community. Our community and neighborhood character. It's a building addition. There's not really any change there. So we won't have any impact on the community or neighborhood character. Police, fire, ambulances, really no impact there. Terrestrial and aquatic ecology. That's where we do have that EPOD. So which we are providing the wetland mitigation or the tree mitigation plan and then the, the impact, the wetland. If you go to the next slide. As I mentioned, it is a point zero five acre disturbance to the wetland. Which we are going to take that low quality wetland and bring it up to more of a functional habitat and increase the quality of that. And with the, the low mo, no mo grass area, so increase some of that. So that our intent is that the overall quality and functionality of the habitat of that well and habitat will be better after the mitigation than it currently is today. So that, that is our intent and our plan. And obviously this is just our, our first attempt. And we have every desire to work with the board and the planning board to to make sure that there is a satisfactory mitigation plan. Ashley, do you want to hop in and make comment on anything?
Oh, I think that was great. So just, just to add on from a procedural standpoint. So the, we anticipate the board will have to undergo a seeker review as part of this project because of the EPOD permit. The, the tree removal that, that we referenced and then also the impact on what was wetland out under the finding statement, which we're just, even though it's no longer jurisdictional, we understand it to be a no build area. So that's a bit of a deviation from the prior finding statement. It's a very limited overall impact. So, you know, we, we would hope that as part of the approvals process, we would be issued a NAGDUK under seeker. And of course, we would have to work with the planning board to, to come up with sufficient and acceptable mitigation. As far as the wetland and upland area disturbance, David already outlined the initial proposal, but as he said, you know, we're, we're here and, and open to working with the board to come up with something that, that's satisfactory to them.
And with that, we are, we're done and ready to, ready for Q and A.
Ramsey, can I, can I lead this for a little bit?
Yeah, please do. And then I, I do have a number of things I do need to say.
So overall, David, you would say that the, that the thresholds of, of parking and building and stormwater management are all within the thresholds that were anticipated and reviewed as part of the master plan for the I portion of the IPD.
That's correct.
The, the one or two things that I, a question that I had relative to the building location, did the IPD show the master plan? And I, and again, this was master plan levels. It wasn't, we weren't schematic or anything better than, than master plan level. Did it show the addition at this location? Or at another position roughly on the building as it was attached to the building?
Yes, I think seventy-four maybe Jeff, in that range. Nope, sorry, I have to go back up.
Well, it was of the existing building.
So at the bottom right, if you scroll in to that, that on the bottom right is the master plan.
Oh, okay. There, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you can see it, Bill.
Yeah, okay. So the relocation of, of the parking under the master plan would have, would have or could have created impacts to the woodlot. And this does anticipate additional buildings in that, in that location. So this from a, from a square footage, you have you have not exceed, you're not anticipating exceeding anything that's approved.
Correct.
Okay. The, and just a quick question on utility corridor crossing the, the, the utility connection that was made to the neighborhood to the south as part of imaging. You're not using that water service at all?
No, that, that water service is already in. So that was already made.
I, I know that, but you're not making any, you don't, you're not making another disturbance for water connection. You're going east to West Henrietta Road.
Correct.
Across or under the street to, to make that connection. Does your alignment anticipate the the second building at, to the east of imaging?
Yep. So as you can see, this master plan shows kind of that second orientation, the second building.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, yeah, we are proposing to be north of that so that we're not impacted by that second building.
Okay. All right. Let me, give me a second to review. I got a bunch of notes. Hundred foot buffer, square footage glass. Geology. So just as a matter of, of course, you know, the, one of the requirements was for an updated traffic study to be performed every five years. Is it, what is it safe to, to say since the last one with regard to growth? In generally in this section of campus.
The last traffic study was twenty eighteen. So the next five year would be in twenty twenty-three.
But the, the anticipated build out of this master plan is going generally lower than, than anticipated or about on pace with what was anticipated.
So the, any of these potential future developments, they would be after the twenty twenty-three traffic study update. So they're, they're farther down the road.
Okay, so is, is DOT basing their decision to not require an additional traffic study on the twenty eighteen plan that had been submitted by Fisher?
No, they, they reviewed the twenty eighteen Fisher and they provided comments on that. They, they are saying that we don't need to do an additional traffic study in addition to the five year.
Okay, I think they did it based on just trip generation.
Okay.
Just a pure calculation above how many trips do you need? You know, I think that's where that came from.
Okay. So Ramsey and David, as, as this continues down the road and we see future build out and everything, it, it wouldn't be for a ways down the road that you would potentially trigger, you know, further traffic analysis or any mitigation. Because this, this addition is not not exceeding any thresholds at this point.
Correct.
I have seen some draft comments, Bill, from Stan Tech. I did not see any alarming comments from their review.
Okay.
That would necessarily affect this. They just need to finish the study. But I'm, we're, we haven't met on it. So I just read them and I have to go through them and then we'll give them off to U of R and Fisher.
All right. Okay. All right. So I, I think I have a, I have a very, you know, very thorough review and I have an understanding now that you know, we, we did anticipate that this, that the wetland, whether it's jurisdictional or not, would, would remain the same, same size. And it sounds like you're proposing mitigation to it that would, could make it better. Why don't, why don't I stop talking Ramsey? Would you ask your questions? And David Fader had a question or a comment that
I got, I had, I had most of what I said. I do need to go back on a few things, which would be the master plan. How, what they're proposing, what we're seeing here relates to the last master plan in its entirety. And two, what does this master plan that we're looking at right now? What additional impacts does it have to the areas that were mapped previously and recently? Cause we do have the wetlands that were done on, what I'm going to say, drawing W one, which was referenced in the finding statement. I'm just trying to understand how that impacts those wetlands, the upland, because it looks like that access road is back. I'm just trying to understand what's happening. We're still having the parking garage or, you know, how does this all come together? Cause if there are changes to the layout that we had, I just want to make sure I know what those impacts are. And right now I do not have that information. So it's, it's, it's not just what you're proposing to build today. But it's, because whatever we do today is locking us in to the future. And we just need a real honest evaluation, which I think you're trying to give us, that we think this is how we're going to grow. But what we need is really the planning, the underlying environmental planning that was put forth for this project. And how the changes that you're proposing to make impact those areas with appropriate mitigation. It is my opinion that if you're going to disturb the size of the wetland, you should keep it the same size. You should delineate that wetland area. It's upland and it should be restored by you guys. It's part of your responsibility of the stewards of the land to keep it up. Cause it was originally a mitigation from the first laser lab that was built. Just trying to give you the background of it. Cause right now I have a preliminary application. With that preliminary application that I have right now, I'm having a rough time saying you shouldn't do a supplemental. That's just my take and I did need to say that. David, do you have anything else that you want to say?
It looks like Ashley wants to say something.
Well, well, let's David. We're not hearing you, David.
I'm, I'm gonna just, just jump in on, on some of that.
Ashley, Ashley, no, I want, I want David to speak first. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant our David. I thought you meant David Cox, sorry.
Okay, so could you zoom out on this slide? Okay, so here's, here, a little bit further. Okay, so here's, here's the thing. I was looking at this and I understand Ramsey's concerns about showing the full build out and what the impacts will have. But I was looking at it and at first I was like, well, they're doing the best they can. This looks, this looks okay because I see quite a bit of habitat extending to the south. But then if you look to the right of this slide, there's a teeny tiny picture that you guys made so small that you can't make out the details. That is like the overall plan. Okay, the little square to the bottom right?
Yes, the plan I'm referring to, David.
No, go back to the thing you're on. Look right there. Yeah, somebody, you got your cursor on it right there. Okay. See that? And it shows them. If you look carefully there, I can't see that real well. But they have a whole series of buildings and stuff jammed in right to the south of the laser lab. So if they put those in, they've completely destroyed all the habitat around the Vernal Pool and right back to where we started. So what are we going to do to prevent those buildings from going in that location?
That's David where we
If you approve those, then they can't
You approve them.
Yes, but then they can't put the new ones in because they still haven't mitigated the Vernal Pool. Cause their mitigation to the Vernal Pool is to put the habitat where the pre-approved buildings are. So this is just kicking the can down the road.
Well, and that's Bill, that's why I was wanting the master plan to be updated. So I could understand the relationship to these additions to what was going to be a parking ramp and those buildings. I'm trying to understand that relationship. Something just seems off. When I look at it, I agree with David Fader. All I'm trying to understand is what are the impacts of these changes?
Now, I missed, I missed a meeting, but I also sent you guys. I, I had a, I believe it was read into the minutes. I don't know for sure. I had some comments. Okay. So, I mean, and I don't know if everybody agree with this, but maybe it's just time to say that like, no, there's, there's no way we can maintain that Vernal Pool. It's not possible. We don't want to do it. It's too hard. And then I would say you need some further mitigation for the loss of that pool. But this, this, the current plan is, it doesn't work because it says the mitigation is, I'm going to put it, I'm going to mitigate until the next round of development, in which case the mitigation will be removed.
Yeah, it's kind of what's happening now a little bit. You know, we got the You know, we got the mitigation for the first phase. Now they don't want to keep that mitigation there. But my issue is I just don't fully understand the impacts to this master plan, how it relates and ties in to the original master plan they had. It's okay to amend it. Not saying you can't. I just need a complete picture. And then I need underneath that all the environmental areas that could be impacted show. Because we have wetland O, wetlands N, and some other ones that are out there that I'm not sure what their statuses.
Yeah, so I I think that I we understand the point that that the town's looking to to see a comprehensive view of of what this means. I think it what we're proposing is or not even proposing some of it's some of it is completely speculative at this point, this these additions that are beyond the current addition. But everything we're showing here in this updated slide is everything there is to show. So we we don't have other updates for other portions of the plan. There's there's nothing else contemplated at this time.
Yeah, but Ashley.
Our future planning. No, can I just? I I understand. So I understand the point that there could be more detail on here showing, you know, the existing buildings that were within this area that that still may be proposed with also showing the wetland area, the upland area, and I don't see a reason that the design folks can't add that. But I think the point is there there are no further impacts beyond this area that we're showing. And we can be more detailed on one map. You know, we gave the wetland and the upland map and the disturbance areas. And I think we can overlay that and add that, as David said, to this map. We can continue to show where other contemplating contemplated building structures are within this quadrant from the existing master plan like that parking structure, if it's still contemplated in the other buildings. I think you'll see they were, you know, were tried to be thoughtful that we don't want to be in a situation where we're offering mitigation that immediately or, you know, with the next project is is no longer going to be valid and we're going to be starting from scratch again. So the idea is the 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 areas that we're proposing, the mitigation within, the rest of the existing wetland L, the upland area, the new seeded area are to remain with with any of this future potential development. So David can get more into the technical details there. And those other wetlands that you referenced, Ramsey, I I don't think we're anticipating any disturbance at all, which is why David didn't reference them.
But if you look at the plan issue. I I have worries based on the plans and tied to the rest of the master plan that those areas are going to be.
David, can you speak?
This is just like before when I had the feeling that you were impacting the wetland the first time. I I'm not doing the mapping. I'm not preparing the designs. I'm just looking at the stuff going, hmm, what does this all mean? So I think it really just starts with getting a clear idea of how this ties in to the old master plan. Are you making any other changes? Are you keeping all those other buildings in addition to this? Are you keeping the parking garage or the parking ramp? What is happening with some of those things? That's not clear in this drawing. And then I do want to know if there's environmental impacts to the changes of the plan. I just need to see them.
And like I said, I I don't think there are beyond what we've already shown, but David and and the folks from Canon, is that something that we can do is to update this portion, which fits within the larger master plan, within which there are no updates, but to be more specific within this portion to not just include our future expansion, but everything else that was previously included in this portion, like the parking garage and some of the other areas that that we want to maintain as part of the potential future build out and then also showing where the wetlands area is and the in the the areas that we are going to be proposing for mitigation, all within one drawing.
My point is, and I've tried to make this, if you have an area of mitigation, okay, and it's for wildlife habitat and it's completely surrounded by development, it has absolutely no value. I mean.
Understood, and we're open to to that discussion as well, David. I think that makes a lot of sense. So if if the planning board's inclination is that this this mitigation, you know, you're you're just providing the the acreage, but it's not sensible and something else somewhere else on campus makes sense. We're open to that as well. I think we were just trying at the first cut to stay within the general area, but your point is well taken and we're not necessarily wed to the plan that David proposed. I think that was just a jumping off point, but you know, anything that the university is willing to consider to be able to move forward here.
So the the reason I liked it was with wildlife, they like corridors or ways to travel. And if you look at the plan that's there now, before the the other potential buildings are built, they can kind of migrate south and then to the west around like over, you know, and connect up to the old growth forest and the other thing. There's like sort of corridors where creatures can move or travel. And those will be lost once the development takes place. You just have this little like Vernal Pool sitting there and I I just don't see the point of it at that point. So that's 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 the issue I'm raising.
Okay, I'd like to I'd like to see if.
Hey, Bill, do you mind? Justin, Justin is on the line. He says hand up. And he needs to be unmuted to speak from the University of Rochester side. Could someone unmute him before he could jump in? It's called Justin's iPhone on the if you look at the participants.
Yeah, I just I just asked them to unmute.
Okay.
Good evening. I turned on my video, but I'm actually kind of under the weather with a bad cold. So I want to first recognize the concerns that were raised both by the board and by by staff in terms of the difference between the master plan and concept that is part of the IPD. It's a concept development plan that reflects the full available entitlements under the IPD versus what we're proposing today. You'll see that what we're proposing today and then for the next potential addition for the laser lab, should funding come through from the federal government, is a much tighter footprint that was than it was originally approved by the planning board as part of the IPD. Since the IPD does give us the right to come in for incremental approvals, working within the available entitlements, the IPD, that 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 leads to the difference between what we're showing you today versus what was in the original IPD. And to Ashley's point is that we're want to work with the planning board and staff to come up with actual mitigation measures that are appropriate and meaningful and that we're not just doing this piecemeal and offering up something that we'll have to come back to you and say, while we changed our line and we need to further impact the conservation, wildlife habitat, Vernal Pool, whatever it is that we're we're working toward here. And then the question around the master plan update. When we do master plans, we look at this as a campus wide. This is part of our overall campus. So South Campus is just one part of our overall campus that we look at. The new president Sarah is Matt Sarah Minglesdorf, if you haven't met her, wonderful person who came to you are from the University of Wisconsin, had intended to undertake a strategic plan within her first year of coming to the university. And then we encountered the pandemic. So we're at a point now where we're managing the pandemic response. And she is now leading the current strategic plan institutional strategic plan effort, which will inform the campus master plan update. And so we're not prepared to bring to you a fully vetted South Campus master plan update until that South strategic plan update, new strategic plan that she's leading is is undertaken, which will identify a number of agendas, including, you know, our work with the communities, but also research agendas, including LLE. So what we're asking for the planning board to consider and staff to consider is that we're bringing a proposal that's a much smaller development footprint than originally visual, you know, conceptualized under the IPD for review and consideration, knowing that we'll come back as part of the master plan update within a year or two. Re- revisit the entire South Campus.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, this is Ken Gordon. I've got I've got some observations I need to share as well. And Justin, thank you. Thank you for jumping on and making the university's position clear. It helps me understand where you're coming from. And what I understand is that these so-called entitlements that you speak of, your rights under the IPD, which you speak of, are premised on finding statement that the town adopted back in 2014. And I think Ramsey and and all have done a good job talking already this evening about how the finding statement set forth areas that were not to be disturbed, which you are now violating and deciding to go into those areas. And albeit with some proposed mitigation, but I hope that the university understands that when you take a finding statement upon which your IPD was premised and start doing different things, it undermines perhaps the entire basis for those so-called entitlements and rights of which you speak. What I'd like to spend a little time talking about is traffic impacts. We have tried to convey the town's concerns. I thought successfully until I saw the materials today. So apparently it needs to be said again. I understand that Fisher has said that it did not take bus service into consideration in its traffic impact study. But I can tell you also that the town in its finding statements certainly did take bus stops into consideration. So I'm I'm reading now from the finding statement and then for reference, I'm on pages nineteen and twenty of the finding statement from October of 2014. And the town board in approving this project concluded that there were adequate protective measures proposed as mitigation along with plans for further study over time to monitor growth with the goal to minimize or eliminate the potential traffic impact resulting from this action. And they made that finding and that conclusion based on and based on the foregoing five mitigation and monitoring factors. And number four on there is RTS bus stops. And that paragraph, I'm not going to spend the time reading the whole paragraph, but I'll tell you what the last sentence of that paragraph is. The university commits to working with RGRTA to maintain and increase transit access to the South Campus. So now we know that hasn't happened. We know that there's going to be additions to the campus. And we also know that the town board in finding its findings under Seeker relied, at least in part, upon the existence of RTS bus stops. So my conclusion can only be that that element of Seeker traffic impact is also something that the town needs to take a fresh look at because we no longer have the mitigation of those existing bus stops. And I hope that makes the town's position clearer for you in understanding why Ramsey and I have both talked a little bit about an SCIS, but certainly added to the list, Ashley, that you've given us already of the factor, the the matters under Seeker that need to be reviewed. One of those additional matters needs to be the traffic and transit impacts of the project.
Can I can I get back to? David, let me just let me ask you this. If you if you look at the original plan that that was approved in the lower right and the I'm gonna without being able to really see it, I I believe it's four buildings and possibly a a parking ramp in there. One, two, three, four, a parking ramp. Okay. And then a big old C of parking outside the parking ramp up to the hundred foot buffer. If the current proposal is to take the square footage represented in those buildings and put those now closer to the laser lab. I don't know if those buildings in the master plan were contemplated as being part of the laser lab or if they were going to be standalone either research or academic buildings. But if those are now all can can next to the laser lab and the parking for the laser lab is addressed, what we're looking for is basically an an assessment of square footage, parking and related traffic to compare to the master plan. Ramsey, is that is that fair? That's what you're looking to assess is the impacts of shifting the buildings around and where's the parking and how are we going to mitigate the law?
Where's the access going through and all those things because there is in the current master plan, the 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 road looping through. Sure, to the main entrance. What is going on with that? Because that one was a lot further to what I'm going to say the south. Right. And what was originally be I'm just trying to understand these relationships. And that's why they need to take this plan and and tie it because if we're still going to have the parking ramp, yes or no? Are those buildings still going to be there? Yes or no? Are we still going to try to make that connection over? Yes or no? Are we changing the locations of them? As what was originally shown? Yes or no? I can't tell from what they've given us. Then I also, we need to know based on that master plan, what are the environmental impacts of it? If it's going into areas that were not contemplated being disturbed? So that's what I was trying to get. I hope that clarifies that.
Yeah, I I yeah, it wasn't initially clear to me what you were what the what the overarching concern was. But if this, if we can take the the square footages of existing or proposed building plus potential, 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 you know, say four potential additions, you know, what is the what is that gross square footage? How does that differ in in use and size from what was proposed in the master plan? Do you have connectivity to the access road next to imaging? Do you come over to the access road to the to the west? How is you know, potentially, you know, from David's standpoint, we could be saving a lot more habitat with the plan that's proposed, but you want to know that there's nothing more coming. And this represents.
That's a good question. David Cox, is this all the development that's going to go in this part of the campus? Nothing further to the south. Nothing below the LLIE parking lot. Because I just was assuming that there'd be more development than what's being shown here. Is this all you're proposing?
I will leave that up to you of our to if they would like to comment on that.
Yeah, I can comment on it. So we're showing our understanding of the development footprint required to further the national research agenda of the LLE. Right? So it's a nationally ranked, top-ranked LLE Laboratory for Laser Energetics Laboratory. And that there would be no additional development happening to the south of that because we just don't need the area. And as folks have pointed out, it's woodlands that could be conserved and preserved as an amenity for our neighbors adjacent to us. In terms of what you're asking, in terms of the potential uses that could happen also on the South Campus. Again, that master plan was high level con- again, that master plan was high-level concept looking at just available development footprint based on preliminary surveys at the time. And then using that to generate in code language, what could be our maximal entitlements in terms of development? Footprint, square footage across the site. Obviously, a laser energy laboratory is a very different use than the imaging building, which has imaging in it as well as pediatrics. So they're not compatible uses in terms of the people that are being served between the two. LLE doesn't have customers the same way that our healthcare services, health service lines has at your medicine at the imaging building. So they're unrelated. It's unlikely we'd have any reason to actually create a connected service loop because what LLE does is totally exclusive from what they do at the imaging building. Does that answer the question?
Oh, would you put that area under conservation easement? Just to make sure we can ensure that it's protected?
Yeah, so I think if that's something we want to discuss as part of our response to the planning board's concerns, we'd want to just take that into light and the fact that we do recognize, I don't want to go back to the point of your attorney, that yes, in fact, the finding statements made particular findings based on the known situation on the campus at that time. Some of those physical conditions have changed that we've documented, but we know that the intent for the city of, town of Brighton is to preserve those. We're recognizing that we are doing a minor impact. We want to mitigate and preserve areas that are important for critical wildlife habitat. The other point I want to talk to you about is RTS service. We paid for, and we offered to continue paying for RTS service to the South Campus. RTS made a decision through a public process of hearings and people and agencies, including Brighton and us as a major nonprofit in the area, about reduction of bus service. And we've been impacted by the choices that RTS has made. And as I said in a staff call, the University of Rochester is more than happy to go to RTS with Brighton as a partner and ask for restoration of that service. And we're prepared to, again, fund that additional service. What we've done is make up that loss of service by doing shuttle buses that take care of the issues in terms of potential traffic and impact based on employment, not in terms of visitors to the campus.
Justin, thank you. So I guess if I'm thinking, David, with your lens on and Ramsey, there's a potential anyway that, you know, bar the impacts to the wetland with the potential service road on the east side of future buildings connecting to the current building application, that there could be substantially, or at least more environmental benefits to this particular layout than the master plan layout. And what you would like to see and understand is just that. Is it, you know, do we have the same amount of square footage anticipated? Do we have the same amount of impervious surface anticipated? Are we getting more green space than anticipated? Do we have the opportunity for adequate mitigation knowing that we've got both Phase One and future phases? And, you know, can we, is it best to put the mitigation of wetland disturbance in the current area? Or are there other areas where the habitat would benefit better from it? It is sounding like this section of campus is going to be devoted to the LLE and that, you know, the master plan may have anticipated different academic or research buildings that, you know, may have been spinoffs or something, but that doesn't appear to be what's actually going to happen, even though this is probably subject to some change over the years. But this, I think that's what you guys are asking for U of R to pass a road to give you answers on.
Yes, and if this is the only development that they're proposing to do in this area, that helps a lot. Because the other development was going a lot further south. So they're, and I'm sitting there saying, if that's it, that starts to resolve some of the issue because those lands can either be under a conservation easement, deed restricted or something, so we don't have to ever go through this again.
Right, and if we can get that, I wanted to agree with you on that, Ramsey. If we can get that commitment from the U of R, that simplifies so much of this and I think eases the path tremendously.
Yeah, because if that's what's going on here, then that's, that was not what I was understanding. I was understanding that, you know, there was still going to be some more possible development to the south of that parking lot. And if there was, were we going to still have that loop road and a few other things?
I agree, because if, that's why when I looked at just what's sitting on the screen now and not the master plan, my thought was, oh gee, they've done, they're doing a pretty good job here. Because if the stuff to the south of that LLE parking and service, potential parking lot, is going to be preserved, then that gives us, it's better than the previous plan and it gives us a whole bunch of options.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of agree with that. But we can work out the details of all that. The issue that we do got, though, is that we have a preliminary application. So I don't think any of this is part of that application is the problem, so.
Okay, so for, for the, for a supplement to the application include, you know, this plan right here with the original master plan kind of overlaid on it to show what the impacts have been with the master plan that was from 2014, how that is, you know, the extent to which that is or isn't ever going to be built out. And then, you know, it's taking that master plan level down to, again, a closer level master plan with the current application plus potential build out. And they can do some calculations on square footage, potential use, and what we might be potentially left with with regard to green space versus what the prior, what the master plan was potentially going to leave us with. And that can be an introduction to a discussion of the preliminary application. And we can look at Seeker.
Yeah.
This is, frankly, it's getting a little bit better and more palatable to, you know, concentrate the building, you know, in a tighter footprint. We don't see the sea of that was potential, a parking garage. That all represented to me an awful lot of traffic that's not going to be the case is going to make this section of the community a lot better, not only for the adjacent neighbors, but for the campus residents themselves. So Ramsey, I'm not going to, I'm not claiming to answer for you, but as far as from the board position, David and Ashley and Justin, does, you know, starting the presentation from preliminary, you know, again, just showing where we started in 2014, how the current state of affairs are with the laser lab and how you see build out occurring over, you know, your four additions there may take fifteen years or something, but that, you know, the square footage proposed is the same or less than what was proposed on the master plan. The parking is less, the need for utility extensions can be less, and we're saving more green space overall. And then you can drill into the details of the current expansion, the wetland mitigation, reforestation or the woodlot and others things associated with a special use permit. Somebody can, yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, I just want, I think, Bill, we're following you. That makes sense. And yes, we'll make sure that what we're showing here is fulsome as to proposed development within this little quadrant and then run the numbers as to how what we're looking at here relates to what was shown before on the prior master plan. So in including not just the buildings, but the connection points and accessways, as Ramsey said as well. So you have the full picture of what it is we're proposing versus what was existing. And then that, I agree, I think it sounds like the baseline to move forward.
Yeah, I also do add in any impacts that this is being impacting, if there's additional ones. So I think the impacts were more done for the addition that's being proposed currently. I just want to make sure we're covering what we're proposing to do with the change of the master plan.
Right, I think that we're, I think we feel pretty confident in that, but yes, we will go back and make sure that we're not disturbing additional wetland areas or areas that we're offering as mitigation or anything like that with what we're showing.
Well, we need to know if you are then.
Here and.
Yeah, because if you are, then we have.
Understood.
We have.
Just one more comment too on the RTS bus service issue. You know, understanding, as Justin said, we're willing to go back to RTS again with the town and talk about, you know, the fact that the university is willing to come to continue payment, to try to get the service back. If we cannot, the RTS bus service is not a separate issue really to be reviewed in a vacuum. It's obviously part of a larger traffic issue. And that's another, that's another point that the planning board needs to review as part of its secret, we understand. But again, I can't see whether we're not triggering any traffic impacts or thresholds rising to the level of a potentially significant adverse environmental impact requiring an SEIS. But we're chasing that down as far as we can and understanding that the town wants the service and that we've been working to try to maintain it. And if we can't, we can't. And it's just something that the planning board's going to have to consider as part of the overall, you know, development.
And I'm fairly confident, Ashley, that the town would be very pleased to partner with the University of Rochester and having a discussion with RGRTA to restore those bus stops. So, you know, maybe you can coordinate with me or Jared, if he's in chitting for you, can coordinate with me and who that spokesperson for U of R is going to be and who it's going to be from the town of Brighton. And we can approach RGRTA to see what we can do. And yes, I do agree with you that it's not a standalone issue. I mean, it's not, bus service is the only mitigation measure that had to do with traffic. But it was one. And so all I'm saying is that that traffic and transportation issue does need to be part of what the planning board is looking at under Seeker.
Yeah, so Jim Chodek, Jim Chodek, our Director of Parking and Transportation, and myself would participate in the discussion with RTS. We've worked with them elsewhere for another project in Anarita. And we can demonstrate the current shuttle service that we put in place to make up for that loss of service. We do take that very seriously because the RTS was not just these bus stops. They're bus stops serving some of our lowest-paid employees that work elsewhere on the campus that then had to resort to alternative means to get to the campus at greater expense. So there's a whole social equity concern in here. And we're happy to partner with the town of Brighton to come and bring that to RTS.
And I think you'll find the town supervisor will be a strong advocate and partner with you in those discussions.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Sorry, I'm muted. Just wanted to hear from any of the other board members that may have questions or comments.
I don't, I don't think I have anything else to add that hasn't already been said.
Thank you, Pam.
I do say, I appreciate that the additional parking lot has been removed and I was happy to see that in these updated plans.
John, you have any?
Yeah, I'm satisfied with all the discussion that's taken place. I'm glad that all these issues are being brought out and being addressed. It's all good, thank you.
Thanks, John. Julie, do you have any questions or comments?
I agree with John. Most, my issues have been addressed and this has been very thorough and look forward to what's coming.
Thank you. Jason?
I'm good, I think you guys pretty much covered it.
All right, all right, and Karen?
Karen, you're muted.
I said, thank you, I'm all set right now. Thank you for the discussion.
All right. All right, I'm grateful for everyone's patience and taking the time to thoroughly talk through this and really understand, you know, just, you know, how we have to look at it and we have to understand how you're looking at it. So appreciate everybody's patience. And David, the thorough presentation helped quite a bit. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from either side? Ramsey, you all set?
Yeah, for tonight I am, but I do need to catch up with the U of R team. Probably because we have an application, we got to figure out some things.
All right.
We have some timing issues, process issues, that type of stuff. I think we have some direction, given that we look like we understand their plan better now. That we know its limits and I think hopefully they can get us the rest of the information that we'll need.
All right. Ken Gordon, you all set?
Yep, thanks, Bill.
Thank you. U of R, Ashley or Justin, you guys all set?
Nothing further from me, thank you. Just, David, are you comfortable with the conversation on the updates to the plan here that the town's looking for? Do you have any questions on that before we sign off?
Well, if I have any question, I'll work with Ken and Ramsey on any kind of response to this. Okay, Justin feel better? And thank you, everybody, for taking the time.
Thanks, everyone, take care.
Yeah, Ashley, take care.
This is old business. I know, I was, I don't believe I was at the last meeting. Public hearing was not closed on this and we don't.
This is just the concept review.
Concept review, okay, very good. So Ramsey, I take it, how are we on our agenda? We have no signs?
No signs.
Yep, we have no signs. There were a number of communications regarding the Twelve Corners Project. They were written to me, but I put them on the agenda because I thought you might find them interesting. I wasn't sure what to do with them, but I figured the real intention was that they wanted me to let you know their concerns about the project. And that's why you see them to me and not to you guys. I think that was their intention.
Yeah, they were on the Brighton page and on the Meadowbrook Community page kind of talking about it too.
Yes, so I figured, you know, there's going to be, I tend to think a few more and you'll get those two.
Okay.
All right, last thing we had.
All right.
Hey, if I could just jump in here, Bill?
Yeah, please.
Bill? Yeah, thanks. So we had talked about adding to the agenda a staff view or report early on before we went into public hearings. And is that something the board is interested in doing at our next meeting?
I am.
Yes.
I am.
Yes.
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 All right.
I got a question, though, Ken. I know that these have to be. I know that these have to be advertised. I know that they have to be public. Is there any way we can start a pre-meeting at like 6:45 and advertise it at 6:45?
Well, yes.
And start the meeting at seven? I know that it has to be advertised, but like
I just want to, I just want to eliminate. I understand that. I want to eliminate the of a pre-meeting. There is no such thing as a pre-meeting that we can have. But we can have our meetings start at any time we advertise it. So we could have a meeting start at 6:45 or so the problem, I think, is that staff is working right up until frankly, minutes before. And it's, for example, you may not know this, but the entire slide presentation that the University of Rochester, Dave Cox brought in from Passaro, showed up at Town Hall at four o'clock this afternoon. And so staff is scrambling to get things ready. The earlier we start, the more difficult it is for staff to get ready to give you the feedback or the report that you're looking for at the beginning of the meeting so that you are more informed when you're listening to the public hearing. I think it's a great idea to have the staff report early in the meeting. I just don't know as a practical matter if we are really going to be ready as staff to start before seven o'clock.
We used to start at 6:30.
Yes, we did. Yeah.
We weren't doing all the posting requirements that we are required to do now. A lot of us could be glad to start it if you want to start it earlier, but
What if you'd started the meeting at seven and started the public hearing at 7:30?
Well, we can, I'm not worried. Yeah, I'm not so worried about. I'm not so worried about how we advertise. We advertise seven o'clock. And our agenda as approved can show that, you know, we're going to start with a staff review after we take a roll, you know, call roll and you know, indicate that the meeting has been properly advertised. We can go right into staff report. And then as a practical matter, yeah, we're probably not going to get to those public hearings until 7:30. But yeah, I agree with Ramsey. It's up to the board as to when the meetings start. And I thought I saw Julie raise her hand.
Yeah, I can't figure out how to access. I'm using somebody else's computer. So this has all been very technically challenging. Mentioning about getting material to us, just as a newbie, isn't there some sort of deadline that they have to have this presentation that should be to to the board before some reasonable time?
We can start putting new timeframes in if you like.
I'm just querying if that was an issue about this, when we start the meeting, that that just wondering.
Well, but okay, if you want to start at 6:30, we'll start at 6:30. We'll start at seven, we'll start at seven. I'll do whatever you guys want.
I mean, I don't think we need the full hour like we used to have because we used to spend but I think if we could go back to, I mean, even 6:45, but I don't know.
Can can staff live with 6:45?
I'll do it. I'm, I'm, hey, I'm retired. I'll do whatever you want.
Jeff.
Hey, Jeff, how do you feel about 6:45?
I'm fine with it. I can manage that.
That's what you want to do. It's going to be quick. The staff review is going to just be quick. It's not going to like, we're going to spend a lot of time on. I'm just going to run through the applications. If you have questions, ask them. We did add it to the agenda tonight. There wasn't a lot. I didn't see too much point to it. But it has been added to the agenda. If you look, you see that we did add it in, we did advertise it, we did publish it that way. But if it is something we got to do, then we, that is a change. And I would suggest maybe we do it starting next year. Just so I don't have to go back and change all of our calendars and redo everything.
Well, you did have an agenda review there. All right.
Yeah, yeah. So you're going to have to get used to calling for that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, all right.
All right. And so I think what Ramsey is saying is we can have the agenda review on for December, but we we would like to change the meeting time starting with the first of the year rather than do it for next month.
I think that's funny. Yeah, I can live with that.
I'm good with that.
No problem.
All in favor? You can say. All right. Folks, have a great Thanksgiving. Families.
Wait, don't we have to do an approval?
Yeah.
Resolution or something on
Yeah, 2900 Monroe.
Oh, they would have to discuss that. Didn't do that, wouldn't they? All right, let's go back. Application 11 P O one dash 21. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
All seconded.
Moved and seconded. Did you get who did it, Ramsey?
Yeah, it was Delaney, right, Pam?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Can you call the roll on that?
Do we have a motion to do the neg death?
No, this is just the closing.
Closing of the hearing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Member Altman? Price?
Hi.
Fader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Babcock Steiner?
Hi.
Sowsky?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Hearing's closed.
Thank you. Does anybody care to make a motion?
I move.
Motion?
I move the board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town town staff and the board approves the application 11 P O one 21 based on testimony given plan submitted in the nine conditions.
Moved and seconded, Fader and Altman. Any further discussion on this? Okay, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Ford?
Hi.
Sowsky?
Hi.
Babcock Steiner?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Fader?
Hi.
Price?
Hi.
Altman?
Hi.
Motion passes. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
Good night, all. See you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Bye.
You're welcome.